Good morning. It's 9:00 a.m. and I will call to order the June 17th meeting of the Slayne County Board of Commissions. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Grievous.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who'd wish to address the commission? Perfect timing, I guess, huh?
Hi, my name's Ashley Jarvis. I reside at 415 Wind Road here in Salina, Kansas. And I wanted to come before you and ask the commission to postpone demolition of the jail, if that is in fact what's at the top of your mind. I emailed Commissioner Hayes an email that I have before me here that kind of is a mini proposal for, sorry, I'm out of breath, is a mini proposal for very valid use of that property. It gives an example of one that's used in Kansas City, the Kansas City Transitional Resource Center. It's much larger, obviously. There's a higher demand for it there. There's a number of different, very successful models out there to copy, but I provided a link to the Kansas City Transitional Center. And currently, to my knowledge, there isn't one in Kansas that's being utilized, a transition resource center. There are minimum, minimum security facilities throughout Kansas that tries to do this job, but not as effectively. What it would be essentially is a landing place for people who are in recovery, who are being released, to reduce recidivism greatly because within those walls, it's scaled down. They're allowed to leave throughout the days. They come back there. But within there, it's similar to Salina Grace in ways, but very different also, as far as the structure and the oversight, and then the funding. So with there not being other facilities in Kansas, one would think that grant writing would be very doable and to be able to get the funding needed for that. The bid that I heard between 3.5 and 4 million to renovate the property, my assumption was that that's the property as a whole. That property, based on my limited knowledge, should be able to be done in phases. This is not something that you want to do, one giant project. It would be something you would want to do in phases. And again, the limited amount of time I've had to do research, this is very doable. I would, I would ask that you consider, consider this. And, I don't know, I find the irony in God taking things that used to be a sign of, of restriction and turning it into a place of restoration. And this would be your opportunity to make a very notable step in the right direction as far as taking care of the people sooner, rather than trying to deal with the problems because they don't have sober places to live. One of the final points I forgot to make is that of the various sober living options that we have in Slayne County, we do have a very strong recovery community here. I've been in it for five and a half years now and met some of the key players that provide the sober, structured living, that so many of our programs here locally who seek to help this same group of people depend upon are all pretty much privately owned organizations, one of which that represents about 70 beds here, has not been shy about, they are looking to retire. They are looking to sell off here very soon, and that represents about 70 beds. There is never not a waiting list for sober living. So that presents a very large gap in the foreseeable future that I don't know how aware Salina or Slayne County is that that need is coming. I don't believe in coincidences, so we have a very good opportunity with this property that I think that the local community could band together to make this feasible. Long story short, it's definitely worth looking into deeper, in my opinion. I'm happy to be a part of that. If you do form a commission or a coalition or something to travel that down. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Very important.
Do you want to sit down now? I will. Do you have copies of that?
I emailed you exactly what I'm looking at.
Okay. What I will do is I'll take that email that you gave me and I'll forward it to the administrator and let them pass it out to the rest of the commission to see. You have some very valid points in there, and I think there's some points, you know, very valid points to take a look at. Like I told you on the phone yesterday, you know, we can't make any promises. I mean, we've, we've researched this and looked at it, and I mean, there's a lot of stuff that foreseeable in that place that, you know, may not be, you know, really fixable. But I mean, anyway, I will forward that email to them, let them take a look at it. I'm one of five, and we'll go from there.
Awesome. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate what you do here.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Norman, that is Salina. As the world population increases, so do our problems increase. We keep increasing the population. We're having more problems. We need reduction. I drove around the county this week, and we've got a drone security problem. There's drones flying, not only in this county, other counties. They're violating private properties, airspace. They're flying over federal property. So you need to address that issue. Who is this flying this drone? Is there a transponder on it identifying themselves? Them drones are not marked or nothing. Why are they out there flying? What are they looking for snooping around? So we need to address security in this county, especially the airport. This is a worldwide problem, these drones. Look how they're using them. We can weaponize them. Chemical, biological, radiological warfare.
Thank you, Norman. Anyone else like to speak? At this time, we will move to our consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of tax, of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of payroll, approval of county commission minutes May 13th, 2025, approval of county commission minutes May 20th, approval of county commission minutes on May 27th, approval of county commission minutes for June 3rd, approval of county commission minutes for, oh, that was work session, I'm sorry. Approval of county commission minutes for June 3rd, approval of county commission minutes for June 10th, talk group MOU with air methods, essential air service program letter of support. Are there any commission who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
Move approval, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as stated. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into action items.
Elder abuse awareness month proclamation with Brandy Boome, D-VAG, domestic violence and elder abuse program manager.
Good morning.
How are you?
Good, good.
Whereas according to the National Council on Aging, one in 10 seniors in America experiences mistreatment or abuse, including domestic and sexual violence, financial exploitation and neglect. And whereas abusers of older adults are both women and men, and are usually family members, caregivers, healthcare workers, or other trusted individuals. And due to the shame, fear, and other barriers elders face in reporting abuse, only a limited number of victims are able to get the help that they need. And whereas elders throughout the United States lose an estimated 2.9 billion or more annually due to elder financial abuse, and 28.3 billion annually due to financial exploitation, such as the illegal taking, misuse, or concealment of funds, property, or assets of a senior or another's to benefit. And whereas too often elder abuse threatens the livelihood of older individuals, erodes their extraordinary potential, and increases their risk of death by 300% compared to seniors who have not been mistreated. And whereas Slayne County's vulnerable and older adults of all socio, social, economic, racial, and ethnic backgrounds may be targets of abuse, neglect, and/or exploitation, which can occur in families, long-term care communities, and medical settings. And whereas we all have the responsibility to support the safety, welfare, and dignity of vulnerable and older adults, and must work toward ending elder abuse by assisting victims in accessing the information and supportive services they need, creating better and more resources for older adults in need, instituting effective intervention and prevention policies, and engaging in discussion with family members and peers to promote awareness and prevention of the quiet epidemic of elder abuse. Now, therefore, the Slayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 2025 as Elder Abuse Awareness Month in Slayne County, and urges all citizens to work together to help protect elder adults from abuse, neglect, and exploitation, because it is imperative that we refuse to tolerate the indignity of elder abuse.
Thank you. Do you have any activities? Is there anything planned?
We have had a lot. So we do a thing called Red Flag Cupcakes, and I go to the senior center, because we serve a 10-county service area. So I've been able to get into Belleville and Concordia and Salina, also send flyers to the Meals on Wheels in Washington County and Ottawa County. We went to Arbor Court and played bingo, also Kenwood and played bingo. We have bingo at the senior center on the 18th. We had a fundraiser at La Curva, a respectarita, so a purple margarita. And then I was also at the Farm and Art Market, which was pretty wet. So it was a wet day. But yes, lots of activities.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have any comments?
I just want to thank you guys for all you do.
Thank you.
I'm sorry I missed a purple margarita day, but I mean, but anyway, thank you guys so much. You guys do a lot for the community.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, proclaim June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month.
Second to motion. We have a motion and a second to proclaim June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks, Brandy. Appreciate it. Have a good day.
Next item?
Donation to use skid steer contract with David Flaherty, livestock and expo director.
Morning commissioners.
Good morning, Dave.
So this request for the action to give authority to the Director of Slayne County Livestock and Expo Center to sign a donation for use agreement with Carrico Implement for a new skid steer at no rental cost to the county starting June 1st, 2025. Alternative actions is to approve the request to give authority to the expo director to sign the contract with Carrico Implement, and number two is deny the request. Staff recommends approving the request to give the expo director the authority to sign the donation for use contract with Carrico Implement. For the past three years, staff have rented a skid steer for 10 months per year, paid from the farm account. The first rent to the lowest bed was $1,005 a month. The last two years, rent on the machine was $550 a month. Several conversations have taken place with different companies on donating a skid steer within the last couple of years. In April 2025, staff were approached by Carrico Implement willing to donate the use of a new skid steer each year, starting June 1st, 2025, with the first contract being two years, and Carrico Implement would have the first right to continue their contract after that two-year period. The contract was sent to county council on May 27, 2025, for final approval, and it was approved. The budget impact, acceptance of the donation would save approximately $5,500 per year out of the farm account. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. That sounds like a great deal to me. And, and this skid steer, will it do everything that you guys, is it big enough to do what you guys really need?
Yes, it'll be the same size that we currently, we were renting from them.
Okay.
It'll be the same size with the option of, they would have the option, if they do sell it, they would bring us another new one.
Okay.
Good job, David. That's great. Thank you.
Took a lot of time.
Does Carrico receive any advertising or any?
So Carrico, back three years ago, had, three or four years ago, had started on our donation program. So they do have a big banner up in Ag Hall, and then they are on our monitor screens. We just told them for donating this, we would continue to run that with no cost to them per year.
And what was the cost of that per year?
$2,000.
Okay. Any other thing from the commission? Anyone from the public like to speak? Seeing none, I'll move for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, to make a motion that we, motion to approve RFA 2025-85. Sorry about that.
We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-85 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Dave. Next item?
Schilling Road Dust Control with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Good morning, commissioners. So I'm going to present from over here, so I can run the computer. I think if I just sit right here, that'll be fine. So I'm going to sit over here, because I'm going to use a Google Earth as part of my presentation, and it helps having me run the drive, per se, the computer, so I can, during my presentation. So, so yeah, so I'm here, because Slayne County has received, you know, significant number of complaints about dust on Schilling Road east of Ohio Street. So most of those complaints are coming from the, the Stone Lake addition and Ryan addition. Those are two relatively new additions on either side of Schilling Road. And so we're here to, here to talk about that. So the, the dust is mainly created from the truck traffic coming off of Johnson Sand. So there's, there's quite a bit of truck traffic coming through there. We did a recent traffic count on that road. On this last Friday, we had a traffic count of 362. And then on Monday, yesterday, we had a traffic count of 220, which, most of those being truck traffics, I would, I would assume. We didn't have the, the counters that did truck traffic versus vehicle traffic, but there's, there's really not much reason for, you know, smaller vehicles to be going back there. So this, this section of road does have a fairly complicated history. You know, so I did put in my request for action, you know, a timeline of events, but I'll go through those real briefly here now, just so that the commission has a, you know, full understanding of really what happened on that road. So as you see up on the screen here, I've got Google Earth pulled up. And so you just have to kind of follow my mouse here, and there's a little bit of lag between me and the screen here, so I'll have to, I'll have to go fairly slow. But I'm going to back this, one thing that Google Earth does, and this is why I want to bring it up, it gives you some historical aerials. And so you can kind of see a timeline of, you know, visually of really what's going on. And so I'm going to back this all the way up to, okay, so here's 1985. Let me bump this up. Here's 1991. So, so here, I'll, I'll start in with the timeline. So between 1993 and 1995, Johnson Sand and Alsop Sand opened pits on the north side of Schilling Road. Let me forward. So this is 1991, and this is 2000. The next one here is 2003. So you could see here that the, this west sand pit right here was Alsop Sand, and over here to the east was Johnson Sand. So at that time, you know, there was a conditional use permit, you know, for that work, you know, for this operations. However, permits before 1998, as I'm told, we can't find them. And so we really don't know what those conditional use permits actually say. You know, so Tim, there's, there's a reason why they can't find those, but we'd have to talk to Tim about that. So, so then in 1995, Slayne County initiated a dust control program using calcium chloride. We did this on, on several roads around the county, but this road here, Schilling Road, was one of those roads, and we provided dust control from Ohio Street all the way to the east side of the entrance to Johnson Sand. So Slayne County did that. And I believe there was a, you know, there was not a cost share agreement, you know, for that work. And so I think Slayne County just performed that work and, and paid for that work. So then, in 1998, Slayne County and the city of Salina entered into an agreement titled Ownership and Responsibility for Schilling Road and Schilling Drainage Structure. And so that was to, that was regarding this drainage ditch that runs along the south side of Schilling Road, and then it angles southeast all the way to the river here. And in that agreement, it states that Slayne County shall retain ownership and responsibility Schilling Road east of Ohio. It had several other terms, but that's, that's the one condition in here that's, you know, relative to what we're talking about here. Also part of this project, I'll find my mouse again, Slayne County purchased this property right here on the north side of the ditch, this south side of the ditch, and then these two parcels right here and here. So that's part of that project. Okay, so then, and let's jump ahead to 2005. So 2005, the planning commission approved Johnson Sand expansion to the east side of the levee. And so I'm going to move forward. So this here is a 2003. Here's another 2003 in color. 2004, you see here, they're still on the zoom out. And here's a 2005, and then that's when the CUP was approved. And then in 2006, you could see down here, they're starting operation on the east side of the levee. Okay, so with that, so they expanded the CUP 93-101, which was the original CUP for the, on the, for the pit on the north side of Schilling. But some conditions were included in that, and on condition 11, it does state that Johnson Sand must participate in dust control and road upgrades. Okay? So then later on that year, in September, there was an agreement between Johnson Sand and Slayne County to provide dust control on the east side of Schilling Road. Okay, so that CUP, what they're talking about is, is, you got to remember, Slayne County is already providing dust control from Ohio Street to the east side of the entrance here, to the original pit. And so the agreement covered from the east side of the entrance pit all the way to the levee. And that's what that was referring to. And there is a copy of that agreement in your packet to, to show that. So let's jump ahead then to 2007. Slayne County prepared Schilling Road for a magnesium chloride application, and that's the, the dust control, you know, that, that was start, we started to use around that time. However, Slayne County did cease dust control in 2008. And so I don't believe that even the east side of Schilling Road ever did receive a dust control treatment on there, because I think we stopped doing that dust control. And then in sometime between 2011 and 2013, just going off of the aerials here, Alsop Sand stopped operating their pit. And so here is a 2006, 2008, 2010, 2011. You can still see, they're still operating through here. And then in 2013, you can see here that they, they stopped operating. So Alsop closed that pit, and sometime in between, I don't know the exact date, I'm just going off the aerials. So then in 2015, Slayne County sent a letter to Johnson Sand. And so that original 2005 agreement about paying for the dust control on the east half, part of that, we were to notify Johnson Sand if we ever quit, and they were still responsible for providing dust control. That never happened. You know, so we stopped in 2008, and in 2015, I finally realized, like, oh, we need to notify Johnson Sand that we are no longer providing dust control. However, they're still responsible for that. So a letter was sent out to Johnson Sand. Johnson Sand did respond with a letter and said that they would continue the dust control. And then finally, in August of 2015, there was a new CUP 15-101, and that was- Uh, and that was for the condit- uh continued use of the sand pit over here on the east side of the levee. Um, and it used the same conditions um, you know, from the original CUP. So it still had that condition uh eleven, which said that Johnson Sand must participate in dust control and road upgrades. However, it was, even though the, the CUP didn't state it, it was referring just to the east, east side of that. Um, so, so that's kind of the, the history of that road. Um, and so I do have a couple other items to kind of help uh in your decision, uh, you know, for whether we're gonna provide dust control on this right now. So I'll, I'll kind of briefly run through some of that. Um, so magnesium chloride is the, the product that's usually used for dust control. Um, and this product is put down in around May or June, but it only lasts for three or four months. You know, so you've got to put it down every year. But if you're putting it down in, in May or June, you know, it's, it's effectiveness, you know, is running out in that, you know, September timeframe. Um, you know, so after that, you know, there is still some residuals in the ground, you know, that helps. But if we have a really hot and dry fall, the dust problem will return. It, it will come back. Um, so the, the, the treated roads, so roads with dust control, they do make it more difficult to grade. Um, you know, because you can't really shape the road. About the only thing you can do as far as maintaining that road surface is after a rain event. Or if you add water to it, you can go and kind of scarify the top of it. Uh, but you can't go too deep because it creates, you know, an inch and a half of a crust on the road that you don't want to disturb. Uh, so you're, you're fairly limited. And so really where that causes problems is on this road. Let me center it back up here. Um, you know, there's lots of truck traffic. Um, you know, and so the, you know, we always build a crown in the road. You know, that's that cross slope to help the water drain off the road. Well, with especially truck traffic, you know, they, that will degrade the crown of the road. And so, and you can't do anything about it. Um, you know, so with a, a road with a flat surface, you can't get water off the road like you want to. Um, you know, and the vertical profile of that road is flat. Everything's gonna be flat. And so if the water stays on the road, then it's gonna start really developing potholes like an asphalt surface road. Um, and there's about the only thing you can do is throw some rock in it. Um, and it probably won't stay. You know, it's, it's gonna be a, a rough road. So that, that is a, a pretty significant issue, you know, that, that can happen with, with dust control. Um, also the um, due to the nineteen ninety-eight interlocal agreement, you know, regarding the, the drainage ditch there on the south side, um, the city councillor did a pin uh that uh Schilling Road is not subject to the same standards governing other roads with city annexations on, on both sides. You know, so we can't tell the city, yeah, you've got to take this now because you've got city limits on both sides. That, that agreement kind of trumps that. And the county councillor kind of um, uh he, he verified that. Um, so, but that doesn't mean we couldn't pursue a cooperative agreement with the city, um, you know, regarding that section. Um, you know, also on the, the, that nineteen ninety-eight interlocal agreement, um, you know, I, I mentioned earlier that the county did acquire some property. Um, and so there's some farm ground to the south of Schilling Road. Um, and that with that farm ground, um, Celine County rents that property. And so we um, we created a count four fifty, which is called the Schilling Road Farm Fund. Um, and that account is funded through the sales of the grain shares, you know, on that. So uh, you know, so we do, we do have a fund that we could use to help um fund any kind of dust control that the commission decides to, to do on Schilling Road. Um, I do want to point out that, let me back this up just a hair. You know, so the, the Stone Lake additions did remove a tree row. So there was a tree row all along the north side of Schilling Road uh for about a half a mile. You know, and that, that trees, you know, did provide some dust suppressant. Um, you know, it would kind of, it would catch the dust. Um, you know, of course, the trees were always gray, um, you know, because of all the dust that it, it acquired through there. But it did help provide that and the developments did take those trees out. Um, you know, so uh some of this is, you know, caused by the, their own doing on that development. Um, you know, some kind of a, a barrier through there would have, would have helped. Um, would have helped, especially from the, you know, a dust coming out of the south. Uh, or I'm sorry, wind coming out of the south, wind coming out of the north. You know, having the tree road does kind of knock some of that dust down. Um, you know, which it, it causes problems because then the dust just sits there. Um, you know, it doesn't move and that's, that's an issue for people driving on the road. But it doesn't, um, you know, it does help the dust from migrating, you know, off of the road. Um, also that there are some counties in Kansas that have a residential dust program uh where either individuals or like an HOA will pay for um a uh, a dust control, you know, in their area. So I've, I've got some permits from several counties and I've talked to some counties about their program. Um, you know, so where on the north side, where you have the um, uh, the Stone Lake, there is an HOA over there. You know, that could be, you know, used to pay for some dust control. But on the south side, on the Ryan Edition, there is no HOA. And so it would be on an individual basis if they did contribute to any kind of dust control through there. Um, so I think that's, that's it for um, kind of my bullets on some information. So I'll move on to the alternatives for action. Um, one is really no action. You know, we, we maintain it as we currently do, you know, as a typical gravel road. You know, we'll, we'll blade it, um, you know, pull shoulders, add aggregate, add sand, you know, to the surface, kind of like we do um on all the other roads. Uh, two would be a county funded dust control. Um, and so this where Celine County applies and funds magnesium chloride dust control for the west half mile of Schilling Road. And I would do it the full twenty-six foot wide, which is kind of the, the width of the gravel surface now. Three would be to cost share with the city of Salina. Um, the county applies the magnesium chloride. Uh, the city of Salina is requested to reimburse the county for a portion within the, the dual city limit. So we have city limits on both sides of the road. Uh, that length is about one thousand one hundred and seventy feet. Um, however, an official request of the city will need to be sent if this alternative is used. Uh, four would be to uh cost share with the city, Johnson Sand and the HOAs in the area. Um, you know, so this would be the same as three, but we just add, pull in a Johnson Sand and then the Stone Lake HOAs. Um, however, I have had conversations um with these entities, the um, the Stone Lake HOAs as well as Johnson Sand. Um, and they're really not willing to participate at this time. Um, and then five would be to upgrade to an asphalt surface road. Uh, so that would be to, to build that half mile, that west half mile to a, a paved road. Um, you know, with significant amount of truck traffic. I mean, you'd have to have a significant um, uh, a pavement design. You know, it'd have to have some structural capacity. That means you're, you're not putting down two or three inches of asphalt. It's gonna have to be a significant section there. Uh, staff recommends alternate uh number one, uh which is no action. So at the time of the residential development, um, the approval, no commitment was made by Celine County to upgrade or provide dust control on Schilling Road. Uh, developers were permitted to remove vegetative buffers. That's a tree row uh that had permitted some of the um dust control migration. So as far as a budget impact, um, I did talk with Scottwood Industries, uh, they're out of Kansas City. And they're the ones who, um, about the only ones in, in Kansas that provide the, the magnesium chloride, which is a dust control uh product. Um, and they could apply the product at a, a cost of a dollar sixty per gallon. So if I go through the same five alternatives, as far as the costs, you know, the alternative one, um, you know, which is continue doing what we're doing now. So there's gonna be no additional cost. If we do the alternate number two, and that would be to share um this cost with the city. Um, oh no, I'm sorry. Alternate two was for Celine County to do the dust control. Um, and we would, we would pay for it. So you're looking at a cost for the dust control of six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents. However, we will have about twenty thousand dollars in preparation. Um, and then to apply two inches of an AB three base uh down. And so it's, it's about that twenty thousand dollars to do that. Uh, alternate three would be to share the cost with the city. Um, and so if the county still did the prep work, uh, so that's about the twenty K. Uh, and then to do our portion, um, you know, which is the um, kind of the, the east half of the west half. Um, we're looking about three thousand four hundred and ninety dollars for uh dust control application where the city's share would be about twenty eight hundred dollars. Um, and then option four would be to um, you know, share the cost with the city, Johnson Sand and the HOAs. Um, again, the, the county would probably still do the twenty thousand dollars of prep work. Um, and then the six thousand two hundred and sixty dollars would be shared between those three entities. And then finally, alternate five would be to convert the um half mile uh from a gravel road to an asphalt surface road. And right now I've got about a, an estimate about seven hundred and fifty thousand for that. So I, I do want to mention again, you know, that there is the four fifty account, the Schilling Road Farm Fund. Uh, and it does have a current balance of a hundred and five thousand fourteen dollars and ninety-four cents. Um, you know, so the uh, the magnesium chloride costs, you know, those are gonna be an annual cost. You know, however, the, the prep work, you know, that really kind of depends on the weather. Um, you know, the, the fall and then the next spring, how much prep work is gonna be needed to get it ready for the next season of dust control. So it's, it's kind of hard to, to guess that. But you know, there, you could say probably another half, you know, a, a good eight to ten thousand dollars a year in prep work. So that's what I've got. Any questions?
Yes, it's a lot.
Just a, yeah, quick question here. As far as the sh- Schilling Road from Ohio to the Dyke, is that whole road actually a county road?
Yes.
Okay. How and why, how did we ever get into an agreement with Johnson Sand to take care of the road from that halfway point to the, to the Dyke? I mean, because do they have to keep it built up to county specs?
No, I mean, it's, you know, so this is two thousand and five when that was um, you know, created. So it's, you know, well before me. But I, I, all I can do is make assumptions, you know, and I tried to provide information um from documents. You know, something I can verify. And so I didn't want to speculate a whole lot. Uh, but here, the only, I, I have to speculate on this is, so I'm assuming, um, you know, since Celine County has been providing dust control for the west half, you know, all the way to the, the original Johnson Sand entrance, this was just to, if they were gonna open up a pit over here on the east side of the levee, that just takes care of the rest of that road.
Okay. At, at this point, does the county actually take care of that road or does Johnson Sand all the way to the Dyke?
I did bring Jerry Peters. He's the road superintendent.
That's why. Would you come up to the stand, please?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We, we blade it all the way to the Dyke and provide uh aggregates and stuff like that.
Okay. All right, well, and that kind of answers my thought of how does Johnson Sand have anything to do in this? If, if the county is actually grading it and doing all the work clear to the Dyke?
I got a couple of questions, Justin. Do, do we know the life expectancy of the Johnson Sand pit?
I do not. I have no idea.
And we have Mr. Johnson here if he would like to.
Yeah, that'd be handy.
I would say in the next probably twenty-five years, twenty to twenty-five years, life expectancy.
Okay.
For that pit.
Another question.
Yeah.
You know, oh, this would be for Justin, I'm sorry. What is the county's?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
What is the county's procedure and how posture on uh dust control uh requests from people in the county and the city in the past?
I mean, so in the past, uh, you know, since we've stopped dust control, um, you know, we, we just tell them that, hey, this is a gravel road. You know, we, we, we blade it just like all of our other roads. I mean, is, is, I don't know, does that answer your question?
It does. I just, I just.
We don't promise anything.
Do we have, and you might not know, it might be uh more for Darren, but do we have a lot of, of complaints and requests for dust control throughout the year within the county?
Y- yes, yeah, we, we get quite a few dust complaints. I mean, most of them would go to the maintenance department. Um, you know, and they don't come to me, but um, we, we do get quite a few dust complaints around, you know, and especially around the times when, you know, when there's construction activities, we've got other, other pits, uh, you know, in the county. And you know, when they're, when they're running hard, um, you know, we get complaints. Um, you know, harvest is gonna be coming up. Eventually it's gonna dry out. Uh, you know, I'm sure we'll get the, you know, complaints from all the harvest traffic. Um, you know, so it's, it's, yeah, we, we do get a significant amount. And you know, and a lot of it has to do with the, you know, some of it has to do with the rock. You know, we bid rock every year. Um, you know, we've got to award the rock that's bid. Um, you know, some rocks better than others, but really the rock that, that we're, um, you know, we've used, you know, is on the um, kind of the western rock ledge. Um, you know, that's um, you know, that's mined. And so it's a little bit softer rock than the rock, you know, they get back in eastern Kansas. And so it's gonna break down. The heavier traffic you have, the more truck traffic, the faster, you know, those, those rocks are gonna break down in dust.
And is there any benefit to using sand on a road as far as dust?
They, they, they do use sand. Um, you know, they, they do top, top with sand. Um, you know, it, it does prov- it does help. You know, it's not gonna eliminate the dust. Um, but it, it, it does help. I do, I do think that you can't just use sand alone uh because sand does not have any structural capacity. Um, you know, and right now the, the maintenance has built up a pretty good base uh on our gravel roads because they're, they're using those larger rocks and, and you know, and when we get moisture, you know, those rocks work down into the road base. And so, but that, that base doesn't last forever. And so if you just use sand right now, that base will break down. And then when we get rains like we got, you know, we've been getting, you know, instead of a, you know, cutting a, you know, a half inch rut in the road with a little bit of slime on the top, uh, you know, you're, you're cutting down nine inches, twelve inches. You know, I'm, I'm from a county in western Kansas where all they have is sand. You know, and it was nothing to cut a, a twelve inch deep rut, you know, trying to make it to school. Uh, you know, so it's, it's a, it's a big deal that, that we put rock on our roads.
Justin, I got, I got just a few questions, okay? Just to clarify then, it is a county road.
Yes.
Okay, we maintain county roads.
Yes.
Uh, but we've done away with dust control off of all county roads in the county. We don't do any dust control.
Correct, since two thousand and eight.
Okay. So August third, two thousand and fifteen, is that the last time Johnson Sand did any dust control at all? May, or done any?
Well, all I know is in two thousand and fifteen, so we sent a letter, you know, because it was in the agreement, we had to notify. The two thousand and five agreement, we had to notify Johnson Sand when we ceased doing dust control. We never did that. And then two thousand and fifteen, something might have happened, might have been a complaint, I'm not sure. Um, but the road and bridge department realized like, oh, we never sent them a, an official letter. Um, and so that's what that letter was, that we ceased to operate and we ceased doing dust control. However, you're still obligated to provide dust control. Johnson Sand said they, well, they will continue dust control. However, in those letters, it never really did specify what that dust control has to be. Okay? So, I mean, putting water on the road every day, a couple times a day, that's dust control. Um, you know, here, what we're talking about is magnesium chloride. You know, so it's a, it's a one and done for that three or four months. Um, you know, so I don't know if Johnson Sand has been providing that dust control on that east half or not.
Well, the reason I bring that up is, you know, that's ten years since we approved the CUP fifteen dash one oh one. Anytime, and I mean, it specifies in those conditional use permits, if they, if you don't comply with that conditional use permit, that it can be pulled at any time. What I want to know is, in that, since August third of two thousand and fifteen, has Johnson Sand taken care of dust control on that road in the pa- in the, in the last ten years?
Yeah, and, and I, we don't track that. There was, yeah, we don't know.
Because it says that they have to.
Yes. On that east half.
I've had individual conversations with city commissioners and don't have a sense that they're really interested in doing a lot. Has your staff had conversations with their staff?
No, we have not. Magnesium chloride.
Uh, is, is used. It needs to be put down every three.
Is used, it needs to be put down every three, four months to be effective. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
But you're pricing it out for just an annual application?
Correct.
Can I ask a question? If you do it every three or four months, or once, does that $20,000 apply each time you have to apply it?
No, it really kind of is going to depend on the road, you know, the condition of the road. You know, so it's, okay, so, you know, I'm getting my information from, you know, one, the supplier of the magnesium chloride, as well as counties that do this work, okay? They're all in the eastern part of the state. And so, this application is a one-time. I'm wondering that they just don't, because in the eastern part of the state, they start to get a little more moisture in the fall, and so therefore, they don't really, because it, you know, even after that three or four months, there is some residuals in the ground, okay? And once you start getting those rains, it will, you know, it does help. But here, I don't know if we really get the rain. Well, I know we don't get the rains like eastern Kansas, you know, and so we can have some, you know, hot and dry fall months to where we can have an issue and where it probably could be put down again. I'm not sure about the supply issue at that time of year. I'd have to talk with Scottwind Industries, because maybe they just get supplied to do it, you know, that, in that, you know, late spring, early summer, because this product comes from the Great Lakes areas, I believe. And so, that would have to be talked about, you know, about a fall application, if that's even possible.
One more question. Is it possible or feasible to develop a benefit district that encompasses both sides of Schilling Road to do a cost share on dust control? Is that something that can be done?
I would think so.
I mean, because I'm sure we're going to, if we do a dust control, we're going to have requests coming up. And if we can have some parameters of how this could happen in the future, I mean, we're taking a giant step here if we step off into dust control, have some parameters that, yeah, benefit district, do a cost share. Is that something that could be looked at?
Absolutely. Yeah.
But I get the feeling, I don't know, if the HOA isn't willing to, if it's not such an issue where they feel like that's something that the HOA would like to buy into, I don't know if a benefit district would be anything different. I don't know.
Yeah, so, so I talked with Todd Roberg. He's the one of three individuals that's, you know, part of the HOA in the development area right now. And so, what he told me is, like, right now, those three individuals are going to be involved in managing the HOA until, there's like 80% or 90% developed. And then, they would, there would be a board created for that HOA, and then that board would take over, is my understanding. So, right now, each property, I think, is paying $25 to the HOA, and there's just not enough money in their accounts to, you know, pay for a dust control. So, I think a development district would be probably the best way to also help encapsulate the, you know, the Ryan addition on the south side.
I'm wondering if, because it sounds like if the HOA that existed, if they went out and spoke with all the residents in both districts, both areas, if they wouldn't be willing to cost share, if it's a problem. And I'm just going to speak, I've only seen, I don't go out there very often, I was coming back from Lindesburg, and I was on Schilling, and that dust is outrageous. I just couldn't believe it when I saw it. And that's the first time I've really saw it, as bad as it was. It was awfully windy that day. So, I'm wondering if the opportunity was presented to each resident, that could there be a cost share added to your HOA? Would they be willing to do that?
Yeah, the difficult part, I think, on the, especially if you're trying to get Ryan addition into, is like, you know, we would need to have some kind of an agreement, you know, with an entity, you know, as well as, you know, we'd have to receive payment from something, from an entity.
But it seems to me that we could be able to do through a benefit district.
I think that's probably the best way of doing it, yes.
Define an area and say, this is a benefit district for this, and this is what it costs.
Well, I still think we still, I still think we need to go back. You know, I look at those alternatives, I still think that if there was, if there was a conditional use permit in 2015 that was given to Johnson Sand with the same conditions to take care of dust control on that road, I want to know, are they doing dust control on that road now? And if they're not, why aren't they doing dust control on that road, because it's part of the conditional use permit?
You know, and the language, let me read that. It's pretty vague. Here, it says, "The condition of, the applicant will be required to participate in costs related to any upgrading of Schilling Road, including the actual access over the dike and dust control on Schilling Road. A copy of the maintenance agreement between Johnson Sand and the City of Salina will need to be submitted to the planning department before any activity may take place at the new location." So, it says that, you know, related costs to, like, dust control, and that's all it says. So, it doesn't say what dust control is, and in the CUP, it doesn't say location, okay? However, it's the agreement, the 2005 agreement, you know, before, you know, where these, this was coming from, is where you can refer that it was just to the east, east half of that and not the west half. But the actual CUP does not state that. So, it's kind of vague, it's kind of up to interpretation, I would suppose.
Well, the chair is going to open it up to public comment here in a second, but just, my general feeling is, doing nothing is not an option.
It's true.
I agree.
I agree.
You go down to the other way, and the county paving that road without any assistance or partnership with the city, Johnson Sand, or the development is not an option. So, I'm not so sure anything's going to come to fruition today. You know, this might just be a conversation that we continue to have with the city, but at least, I mean, just doing nothing is not an option, so.
Being someone that lives on a dirt road and is surrounded by dirt roads, I know what dust is. We see it all the time. We also understand that when I built my home there, dust was going to be an issue, and it is. But the benefit of having the house where I wanted it, took over the fact that I would have a dust problem. And I don't think we, we were not honest with the people at Stone Lake, that that's a county road, it's going to be a county road, and there will be dust. And it was there when they built, and it became an issue, it became a big issue when the trees were cut out. So, yeah, I think the conversation will probably go on a day from this.
Let's open it up, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hey, can we open up? I think it's time.
You guys are done?
Yeah, for now.
Okay, for now. We'll open it up to public comments. Anyone from the public like to speak?
Northern Manleslana, magnesium contaminates water. Ask us out there at Sundowner West.
Calcium chloride causes chemical burns. Ask concrete workers. Ask Denver, Colorado Stapleton International Airport, they're having problems with groundwater contamination from concrete to dust. You've got a big problem in this whole county, not only there, the airport, everywhere. You're issuing permits. Is KDHG aware of this issue? We need to start looking at human health, because that stuff, that calcium chloride will burn you. So, I don't know what you guys are going to do with it, but human health issues comes first. I about lost my son.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Hello. Kelly Dunn, 1216 Shoreline Drive. Aunt Justin, thanks for the presentation. I learned a lot on that. So, with that said, we have to think about the future, too. That's a very, very busy intersection. Go by there at anywhere from 3:00 to 7:00 at night. I mean, we almost need traffic control there right now. As far as dust control, I think that's a Band-Aid. I mean, you're, I mean, Salina's growing that way. So, to think that we want to spend $20,000 every couple of months to keep the dust down, to me, that's just kind of a Band-Aid. As far as, as cutting the trees down there, that was a block. The reason we did that, because probably 80% of those trees were dead, and it was eyesore, and we had, I think there was something about, if we waited until we got closer with the houses, we would have to, there was something about what we had to do with the trees, and at that point, we could get rid of them without a whole lot of cost. What else? I have had some conversations with people in the city, and they seem like it's reasonable that they would cost share with it. I know you guys talked about, you know, HOA paid for this, and Stone Lake, and other people, but, you know, we do pay. I mean, there's going to be over 400 houses between the two subdivisions, and that's quite a bit of property tax. And the city and the county get a lot of property taxing money, and a lot of that money, some of that money is dedicated to roads. I don't know what the percentage is, but it seems reasonable to me that we should have a clean air environment to live in when we have that many people paying property taxes in that area. And I guess that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer it.
Was it explained to the homeowners that that was a county road, and there was no plans in the future to have any improvements?
As far as, as far as like realtors explaining to people that are buying out there?
Realtors, builders, whoever.
Yeah, I don't, not that I know of. I mean, I mean, as long as that's been there, I assumed, you know, as the city grows, you know, you pave roads, just like Schilling Road got paved, when that became part of, you know, a part of the city. And it just seems reasonable that it should be, it should be a paved road, with it being...
I don't deny that. I agree with you there. I think at some point, there will be a road improvement there, whether it be a city road or a county road, but probably more a city road, because the city's grown in that direction, and there's an issue.
But the city's in the county, too. I mean, I mean, you guys, this is the county, but that road's in, it's in the county, got city limits on each side, but we're all in the county. It's not two different things.
You're right. But the county does things at a certain spec.
I understand.
And the city has a lot more expansive spec with curb, gutter, sidewalks, and all that.
Exactly, and they do, they do do, they, they would entertain an interim street, like Markley Road, Magnolia, east of the bridge. None of those have curb and gutter sidewalks on it, and they've worked for 20-some years with no problems.
And they've shared that with you, that they would entertain doing that?
I think so. I mean, I think that's definitely worth a conversation to have, you know? I don't think we're going to get, I don't, I mean, I'm not speaking for everybody here, but from the HOA standpoint, I don't think, I think as much as people paying property taxes out there, they're going to say, why in the heck would I give more money to take care of a road that that should be paid for with my property taxes?
Okay. Anyone else like to speak? Any other comments?
I'm Dana Meyer. I live at 2832 Malibu Drive, which I live in that residence. Been there five years. And I agree with Kelly, the tree line, it had, did have a little effect, but the tree line was dying, it had to be out of there anyway. And then, in a good hot day, dry day, that dust is in the air. It just doesn't fall over Stone Lake Drive. It goes south, even further into town. So, and like I, you know, we said here, the city's growing out, something needs to be done, you know, to the road, one way or another, whether it's a short-term fix, I would say a long-term fix, maybe down the road, something that'll last, you know? I don't know. But, and, you know, I'm not willing to pay extra for it. I pay enough in property taxes, the way it is. And, you know, I just feel like something needs to be done fairly quick, so.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? You done?
Mr. Chair, as I said earlier, I never felt like we were going to probably take action exactly today, so. Justin, first of all, thank you very much for the information. I'm like Mr. Dunn, learned some things, did not know about the conditional use permit, so appreciate your history on that. If I could just talk to my fellow commissioners, I just think we're, I think we're headed down the road where we got to do something. But I'm just not willing to do that until we find out where the city stands on things. And so, I mean, Justin, do we, do we talk to you, or, I mean, to initiate that conversation? Because I can't talk to...
Absolutely. I'll get the interim city manager and see if we can't get something set up, at least start conversations that way.
Because I...
And whether it be a conversation.
I agree with the individuals that came up here today. I mean, it's a problem, and property taxes are very high right now, and so, but at the same time, it is a problem, so.
It is, and I just want to say is that I've lived in the county for 46 years, 47 years, and driven all over the county, and I get a lot of phone calls from all over the county about dust control. I mean, it's just, Schilling Road is not the only dust control issue, the problem that we have. We have them a lot of different places. So, it's like me, is to sit back and say, when they made the new development over or off of Holmes Road between Crawford and Magnolia, a few of those houses went in, and all of a sudden, it's like, oh, we have a dust control issue on that, and we, you guys need to blacktop this road. Well, sorry, when you built that road, it was a dirt road, and it was a dusty road at that point. I've seen a lot of hedge rows torn out before, or even trimmed up, and it doesn't take a couple of years before they're just bushier and all get out, and they're just, I know I've driven that by there a lot on those dead trees, but there was a lot of live trees in that windrow there. So, part of it is like, okay, yeah, we took out the hedge row, maybe some of it was dead, but not all of it. And there was a lot of stuff that would grow back. To me, right now, either we just table it, or we vote for no action, and then discuss it, and go further down the road.
I think that, and I appreciate all the comments of the commissioners and the public, and I, like I said, I saw it firsthand, and I can imagine it's a problem for everybody that lives out there. And I agree that we can't do nothing, and I like the idea of starting a conversation with interim city manager and seeing where we can go with that. Like I said, I appreciate all your work, Justin, and your wonderful presentation. That historical information is interesting. But I think that we do do something and try to start out a conversation with the city and see where they're willing to do, and continue this conversation.
There is a unique portion of this, and, Mr. Chair, you'd made a point that you'd lived in the county for 46 years. We all live in the county. You live in the rural areas, and you don't pay city taxes. This area pays city and county taxes. So, I mean, the level of what they should expect is a little bit different, and that's why I want the city to be part of this conversation.
I also think that this should raise a flag for, I don't know how much input we would have in the future, but when you have these, these building areas develop along, the city moves out, and you have a county bordering a city property, that there's some type of agreement or something that is defined, what happens to this road? Who takes care of this? I mean, as it continues to grow, the county will always have a border there, the city never wants the road, but the people living in the city want, they're used to city roads. They like city roads, and so I think, I don't know if there's anything that would be put in...
Commissioner, I think that the, when we went through the lawsuit eight, 10 years ago, I think that was settled, that when they got it on both sides.
On both sides.
However, this property is preempted by that thing. So, I think you're, you are exactly right. That has, is being taken care of most of the... So I think you're, you are exactly right, that has, is being taken care of most other places. This is just such a unique thing because of your agreement that you brought up, because I think I brought this up four or five months ago, I said, well, cities' property is on both sides. But the county councillor has said that that doesn't apply on this case, so, I agree with you.
It kind of looks like if the city property is on both sides, and it's in the city limits, the city ought to annex that road into the, into the city.
And that is the case around the county now, but not on this property.
Right.
So do we, do we need a motion to no, no action taken, or can it just drop as no action taken?
Well, I think it's, there's more, we have some disagreement in here, I think we need to go forward on this, and not necessarily vote on anything today, but we need to have a consensus to staff.
Yes, to bring it back for further discussion.
No, to, to, I want, I want to know where the city stands on this before it comes back to us.
Yeah, I definitely want to know.
Yeah, it does make sense.
So, what, probably, since this is a request for action, a motion of just directing staff to what you're looking for, would be appropriate.
We can't make a motion to take no action with, and have staff further.
You could do that, too. Absolutely.
At least have a motion, you have a motion.
I don't, I don't want to table it, because then it's gotta be untabled.
The whole thing, I agree.
Is that your motion?
Do I have a motion?
You say it.
I would move that we, well, I'm not real sure what you said, but further direct the staff, county staff, to have a conversation with the interim city manager on this matter, and then bring those discussions back to the commissioner later date.
Basically, option one.
With no action taken.
With no action taken.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries.
Chairman, could I get a clarification?
Yes.
Is the conversation with the city, is that regarding dust control, or is that regarding to upgrade that road to an asphalt surface road?
My, my portion of what I wanted to hear was all of the above.
Yeah.
What, what are they willing, I mean, they have to realize that those folks are paying city taxes, and, and they need to be part of this solution.
I agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
Informational item on opioid settlement funding, next steps, with Jason Tiller.
Good morning, Commissioners. So you should have the one-pager before you today. So the city and the county, on a little bit of background, started receiving opioid settlement funds in 2024, and they're project, projected to continue receiving these funds up until 2038. The Celine County Opioid Community Needs Assessment was completed this past April, and then really, the next step before we could really start moving forward with the information from that needs assessment, was to have a conversation between the city and the county, which occurred in late May, to kind of discuss, how were we going to utilize the different funds that were received both by the city and the county? Not only to support efforts, but in the support of the four priorities that were outlined in the needs assessment, which improve access to treatment services, expand prevention education, reduce stigma, excuse me, and strengthen support for people in recovery. So, on May 21st, myself, Megan, our health educator, Philip Smith Haynes, and Sean Harrington set and discussed the funding, and after a pretty lengthy discussion, came up with the following generalized process. So, kind of in this verbal agreement, we have kind of determined that there'll probably be about an average of a hundred thousand per year between the two entities, and then about a fifteen percent, thirty-five percent, fifty percent split. Fifteen thousand would go to program administration, which I'll get to that in a second. Thirty-five thousand to law enforcement, which will be retained by city and county for their respective law enforcement duties or requirements as outlined by settlement documents. And then fifty thousand would go to study, the study priorities as listed above, basically as a grant program. And then the breakdown below. So, from that, we intend to, after the city reviews the same information in the next couple of weeks, bring and develop in this next month interlocal agreements around the following principles, that basically, the county will bill the city for their share of the funding, rather than trying to do a split accounting of, you know, the city dollars and the county dollars, and basically simplifying the accounting. The county would report the expenses to the city for their reporting, there would be a grant review committee, made up of seven people, four from the city and three from the county, basically to advise, review, and approve grant, grant applications and grant reports. This would also include some appointment of community-based organizations who were not doing work, basically to provide some third-party input into the decisions on the grant applications that are received. For the program administration part, that would include either contracting, or, you know, additional time for someone else, basically to develop and administer grant programs, review grant reports, maintain expenditure tracking, and then particularly to, to assemble the grant reports that are required each year, that have to be sent back to the AG's office on how these opioid settlement funds are used. And then below is the timeline that we're looking at. Of course, this month, Commissioners approving the concept, those formalized agreements, next month, August, would be looking at appointing a grant committee, issuing grant solicitations by September. October, the applications would be due, looking at reviewing and recommendations by the committee, in November, two of the commission to be approved in December, to start the grant programs for the, that other fifty thousand, as I mentioned above, in January. And then this would be basically kind of an ongoing annual process.
Questions?
I got a question. When you, when you mentioned that these funds will be received by both the county and the city?
Correct.
And they'll be pooled together?
Essentially, yes.
And then broken out, however you drew, but when you go back to Commissioners approve the grants, is that the city commission, is that the county commission?
Those are some of the details, I think, that will be, after the city meets, and they're gonna be reviewing the same draft document, or this, and then when we work on the interlocal agreement, a lot of those final details, as far as that approval process, will be finalized within the interlocal agreements.
The program administration responsibilities, is that gonna be contracted out and hired? Are you expected to do that within your agency, and you'll take some of the money?
So, we have discussed a couple of options on that, either contracting, either a person or an organization, or either increasing staff time for somebody else to do that, but that hasn't been specifically finalized yet as far as who would be doing that.
Well, I, I just want to say, that if it's at the Celine County Health Department, there needs to be funding applied to that position in some manner, because that's a lot of work. I mean, I, I just know that for a fact.
Yeah, I would prefer, because at this point, I mean, whether it ends up on us, and there is, for what's involved, I would really, in some ways, rather it be somebody who, that's their focus, and not just one of their myriad other duties that they do, because yes, we anticipate, you know, that it is gonna be quite a bit with applications, with the reporting, not only the reporting back up to the AG, but, you know, reviewing financial reports for grantees, and, you know, any other reporting that has to be reviewed and compiled, so.
I appreciate the, the need for an interlocal agreement for the funding, but after that, it seems like we're the Board of Health, and, you know, the county runs the health department, so, I mean, what role would the city have in okaying things after the money gets transferred?
Good question, because this is still just, you know, very, very.
I'll, I'll just jump in here, so I wasn't a part of this conversation, but knew enough about it, all to be dangerous, I guess you could say. So the intent would be that the county would take the lead in accepting grant applications. However, we would have a review committee to review the grant applications that would involve somebody from the city, but the actual grant dollars would come from the county, and then we would bill the city, and so on and so forth, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I just don't want to have two votes, I don't want it that.
Right, no, no, that is not the intent, no.
Jason, I was kind of reading through, and I didn't see anything, maybe I missed it, is there anything in that funding at all for any type of, of Narcan distribution for places that, I mean, we have very few really in the City of Salina where, where folks can get Narcan.
So, for the, for that, I think that would fall into that fifty thousand for study priorities, if somebody wanted to, you know, fill out a grant for, you know, doing some sort of Narcan distribution program. Otherwise, if it were for Narcan distribution through law enforcement, then in my opinion, that would be part of that thirty-five thousand that's within law enforcement.
Maybe you covered this, and I just didn't hear it, but what all can this money be used for? I mean, it can't be used for dust control, I know that.
No, I don't have the full settlement documents that goes into those details. That's mainly been, when it comes down to that, it's mainly been Phil and the city administrators that have handled that part.
So you're talking, this money is strictly related towards opioid.
Opioid settlement.
Yeah, and so you're talking about recovery, prevention of addiction, and stuff like
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I look forward to more updates.
Yes, there will be more to come.
Thank you.
All right.
Next.
Nothing for me.
Nothing for me. Sorry, don't have anything. Kind of have a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion for adjournment and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same time, motion carries.